You're gonna sit back here as well as long as I can.
Too late.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Okay. All right, call this work session to order and we're here to talk about the 2012 city budget. Just have a work session and answer any questions and all that. Anything that council has and then we'll have a joint session with the school board after this.
Mr. Mayor, Theresa has prepared a brief summarization of the budget. It will include a few of the points that I had made previously, but also some additional points. Things we wanted to make sure that had been brought to your attention and then at that point we'll stop and try to answer any questions we can for you.
Take it away. This is also just sort of a brief history as well as to where we've come from over the last few years. Starting in 2008, the city began experiencing a decline in revenue for a number of reasons. Personal property tax revenues decreased by almost $300,000 and haven't quite recovered yet. This is mostly due to the gas prices back in 2008, in the fall of 2008. Interest revenue declined by almost $145,000 and this has a lot to do with our deposits being down over the years and the interest rate declined just in general. Also, as the economy weakened, business license also decreased and we've had a drop in that of almost $50,000 over the last three years. Not only local revenues have decreased, our state revenues have also decreased. The state eliminated the construction fund program at the school division, which we use to fund our debt service for the schools. This amounted to over $130,000. The state also reclassified lottery fund construction revenue we also used to pay our debt service and this amounted to $165,000 for basically a total of almost $300,000. $599 funding for the police has also decreased by well over $44,000. And the state also reduced our constitutional officer and registrar reimbursements by $53,000. Overall, the increase is about $400,000. As our revenues were decreasing significantly, our costs were also increasing. One of those costs included our debt service. With the increase in debt in 2005, '06, '07, and '08 to fund the school and to fund the fire station construction, our debt service increased by over $450,000. Social services increased with, due to the demand for those services and our health insurance costs increased as well. The line of duty program, which is a state program, it's administered by the state using state guidelines, is now to be required, is required to be paid by the locality. The fiscal year '12 budget includes over $13,000 for this program. The other, the other item that the state has is the Appropriations Act, which was a $60 million budget reduction plan, which required the local, mandatory, mandatory for the local governments to either take a reduction in certain revenues that the state had or to pay back revenue that the state had given us. For fiscal year '12, that was $42,000. Not only has the city experienced declining revenues, the school division has as well. As discussed before, the state reclassified the lottery fund for operational and construction purposes to instructional only. The city received the construction portion of the lottery to pay debt service and the school division received the operational portion. Therefore, the impact to the school division for this reclassification was approximately $165,000. The state also used federal stimulus funds to supplant the general fund cuts to basic aid. Again, the impact to the school division was over $500,000. The school's local composite index was also revised during this biennium for a loss of over, over almost $500,000, $494,000. The final reductions in the state, reduction in state is to reduce textbook funding for school divisions. Throughout the three past budget cycles, textbook funding has been eliminated and partially restored. As a result of these changes, the school division receives $135,000 less in textbook, textbook funding. Over the years, the total impact to the revenue alone for the school division was $1.3 million. Again, expenses increased as well. The state increased the VRS rate for teachers. Mandatory increase in the rate resulted in $172,000 in additional costs for the school division. Along with, along with graduation requirements to include economics and personal finance courses, developing academic and career plans for students in grades seven through 12 and requiring elementary school students to take the SOLs online are some of the unfunded mandates that the state has, the state has done. Additionally, the federal mandates for special education have never fully been funded. As a remedy to these problems with the decreasing revenue and increasing non-discretionary expenditures, the city has reduced total expenditures to a level that's lower than 2007. In order to reduce spending, the city implemented some things. An early retirement plan eliminated the vacant positions. We've had a reduction in force, restructured and refinanced debt. We have virtually eliminated all of our capital projects, our capital outlay and routine maintenance. With the reduction in force, early retirement and elimination of vacant positions, the city's personnel is at a level below 2003. On top of all these challenges, the city, over the last four budget cycles, the city is faced with a decrease in the assessment of property. As Randy presented, on April 11th, the drop in reassessment equates to a $1.6 million decrease in revenue to the city. As a result, the city manager has recommended an equalized rate of 92 cent. A rate of 98 cent was advertised to give city council more flexibility during the budget deliberations. With this equalized rate of 92, 92 cent, the city is still receiving $139,000 less than it would have. Over the years, as, as the real property tax revenues, the revenues increased, the tax rate has decreased. And in 2012, the revenue will decrease with the previous year, like I've said, like I just said a minute ago. As, as, at the equalized rate, there are no new positions, there are no new programs in this fully funds the school division. Some of the other things that I wanted to highlight in the budget was our health insurance. Our health insurance did, did increase over 14%. Of that 14%, 20% of that increase is going to be borne by the employee and 80% by the city. We also refinanced some of our existing debt in February of 2010, 11. With the refinancing, we were able to save interest as well as budget dollars in fiscal year '12. These are just one-time savings. The existing debt service to be paid with general fund transfers increased in fiscal year '13 by $371,000 and another $331,000 in '14 and then leveled off for the next eight years. The utility fund will also see an increase in debt service in fiscal year '13 and then the final maturity of the pump station will come in in 2015. Also in this budget is a proposed increase in the solid waste fee. The solid, solid waste has increased in, in cost and there is a 10% increase in the fees for, for that program. Parks and Rec is proposing two small increases in their, couple of their programs. Soccer is $3 and field hockey camp is $5. Included in this budget is also the addition of a convenience fee for face-to-face credit card payments to the city. Currently, the city pays over $20,000 for these fees. This charge would help recoup some of those fees that the city is being charged for the credit card transactions. And these are, this is just some, some of the highlights and I'll be, I'll answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions?
Graham, the one, I noticed you projecting that the DMV is going to drop by $20,000. Is that because of car sales or?
Actually, it's a combination of the fact that we're going to be seeing a full year of not being able to get any revenue off of the dealer and we have a better idea what that is affecting the DMV. We can no longer do title work for any of the dealers that have the onsite, if they have the terminals in their dealerships. That was something that was changed last year, you probably weren't aware of, but.
Changed by the state.
Changed by the state.
Protested by us.
We protested and lost.
They did it to us again.
Yeah.
My Don?
Yeah.
We have had an increase in cigarette tax since we initiated it about nine years ago, eight years ago, whatever. The projections are now like you were going to lose like 15%. Is it time this year, I guess I'll ask, you know, ask council and the staff, is it time to think about raising the cigarette tax again? I know York County has none and that's always been a complaint, but I mean, if we're down 15%, that's quite, that's, that's quite hefty.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just give you my opinion on that. City of Hampton and City of New Bernews continues to go up on their cigarette tax. I think they're up to 75, 85 cents a pack, which is 8.50 a carton, whereas we're at 10 cents a pack, always have been, always, you know, 10, so it's a dollar a carton.
8.50 a pack, you mean?
8.50 a carton.
A carton.
And, and.
Oh, tax wise, yeah.
Yeah, tax wise, yes. Tax, completely taxed for Hampton and New Bernews, whereas we're a dollar a carton or 10 cents a pack. I don't know why our revenues have been decreasing. I'd like to think that it's because citizens have made good conscientious decisions, smoked less and so maybe that's perhaps it, but I do not know the answer. I mean, if otherwise people are buying, maybe people are going to York County and buying their cigarettes from York County because there is no tax there. I know our merchants have.
I know people from Hampton are coming to Pecosin to buy because.
Well, it saves 7.50 to cross the bridge.
Yeah. I don't know whether, you know, something for this year or for next, you know, we wait to next year to project how we're going to do. I mean, I don't know. Randy?
As you and I discussed, we do have the ability to go up, which may have room under the enabling statute. The amount of money that we're talking about in terms of reduction from what we've seen is in the eight to $10,000 range, off the top of my head, Mr. Gregor. I think you're going to have an opportunity, there are many, this isn't one of those things that has to be done as part of the annual process and in fact, it can't be done as part of this annual process because it needs its own, its own public hearing and ordinance requirements. It doesn't mean you couldn't pick it right back up for consideration in May. But I think you're going to have an opportunity as a council to discuss budget over the summer. So that's your next opportunity and beyond that, as we look at fiscal '13, the same issues that have affected us this year will affect us as we go into '13 and our options in dealing with them will be even less than we have now. So I think that, that your idea is worth, is one we ought to really think about, but I guess as you say, we don't need to rush to try to force it into this budget decision because from a calendar standpoint, we can't.
Okay, I got you. I know we're giving the school board 138,000?
134,000?
Whatever. For all their staff, that seems like a pitiless. I'd like to see us maybe look at covering the cost of VRS, FICA, social security so that they get their increase like our city employees did last year. I mean, it's not going to be $1,000 to the school employees, but I don't know whether we can find 28,000, 30,000, whatever the figure may be to cover the, the benefits package for them. I know if we do something that Mr. Green has talked about, it would more than cover that area.
Anything else? Got another question? You want to consider raising the tax rate above the manager's proposed, and some we'll come back to that. You got any questions for her as is?
The only other thing I had, Gene, was the, the continual drain of Parks and Recreation and the general fund. I mean, this year's going to be like $75,000 somewhere.
79.
79, okay. I'm bad on figures. But, I mean, that's a lot of money to have to feed into Parks and Recreation and, you know, raising, you know, fees by $3, to me, it may hurt a lot of kids from playing sports. It doesn't seem like much, but it may be, you know, it may be a lot. I mean, so I don't know what we can do, you know, how we can, you know, make Parks and Rec less of a burden on our general fund than it has been over the last couple of years.
I don't think anybody's got the, the answer for you there, Frank.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's an enterprise fund and, and, I mean, it is one of those things that is going to cost.
Do you have any questions on the budget?
Ray?
As, as it's written and then I guess we'll have some conversations about, I know Buddy's been talking about.
Go ahead and let Frank finish that.
He donated, no, we haven't donated anything to the Peninsula Community Foundation, but from what I understand, they have been consolidated on the South Side now. And we have $25,000 sitting, sitting there that we gave as a contribution back a number of years ago. And I'm wondering whether it's appropriate time to think about if we can withdraw the money, if we can get some kind of a, it was, I think it was intended to be helping on like some of our, our youth sports teams and whatever, if I remember right, from briefings, you know, from, I don't know how many years ago it was. But is it still a good thing that they keep that money in there? I guess I'll leave it up to, you know, you and the city manager to.
Is that in here now? I'm not familiar with the Peninsula Community Foundation.
Yeah.
What is that?
We did it several years ago.
So what you're saying, what, let me see if I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is, we made a donation several years ago, it's still in that fund sitting there.
Yeah.
As far, but it's not spent.
It's not spent.
Okay. And what you're saying is, do we need to continue to carry it in that fund or do we just return it to the fund balance?
Fund balance or can we get it, can we even get it out? I don't know.
Okay.
Or can we, or if we can't get it out, can we do something to see if we can somehow take advantage of that 25,000 in there by getting the community foundation to do something for the community?
I just want to point out, it's, you made a donation to an outside organization, so it's not carried on our books at all.
Correct.
The options include asking for it back, which you can, ask.
So we did spend it. That's what I was asking.
You cut that check to the outside group. They have it now on behalf of, of our community. There is no specific, we can't call it back.
Right.
We can request it back or we can meet with them to see about its more active use for the purpose it was intended. Either way, the council would like or both.
Well, maybe, maybe they could sponsor some grants for the kids that can't afford to play the sports and, and take part in Parks and Rec programs. I think that's basically what, what they did in Hampton and New Bernews.
That's an excellent suggestion, so what I'm hearing is.
If they'd be willing to do that, that would help us.
I'm hearing what, I mean, I don't think anybody on council would have an issue with it. What we would like to do is have Randy get into a conversation, you know, the city manager get into a conversation on the, with that agency about sponsoring Pecosin Youth and Parks and Rec things with the, what money has not been spent by that agency at this point.
What was the original purpose for the fund?
The foundation was created to do just that, to do grants for.
Unapproved.
Educational things and sports related things for kids that couldn't afford.
They reached, they, you know, we gave them the 25,000 and they are supposed to go out to the Kellogg Foundation and people and organizations like that.
Okay.
And bring in additional money. And then, I don't know, we're supposed to apply for the grants ourselves as a city or whether they say, hey, we got a pot of money that is, is good for whatever, but it hasn't materialized very much since.
None of us come back to citizens in Pecosin as far as you know then?
Oh, no.
No, nothing yet. And then, see, there were two divisions. There was the South Side Division and there was the Peninsula Division and the Peninsula was run by a resident of Pecosin. And that's how we got involved in it. They asked us if we would join the foundation and they said that they would consider doing grants, so maybe it's time to ask them for some grants.
Is that resident still here as far as we know?
Which lives in York County now, I think.
Absolutely. So that's.
Jenna.
And again, that's, that's, so Randy's got that on his, on his plate to start that conversation and, but right at this point, we don't know what the net budget effect would be. I had a couple of questions. Credit card fees, I know that's a separate issue that's on the agenda for later on this evening to at least start the discussion. In the budget, how did you capture that? Is it assuming that the fees are not reimbursed?
They are reimbursed.
They are reimbursed.
There is a little bit additional revenue in the general fund to cover those fees.
Okay. So if later on we decide not to do that, then that's a, that's a $28,000 bill.
Close on the budget, yes, in revenue that we would have to, to make up.
Okay. And in the solid waste fee increase, which seems to be the hottest topic, I mean, basically what you've proposed to us here is a relatively flat budget, slightly decreased. It's actually a slightly decreased budget with the income. The solid waste fee is the only item that I've heard a lot of discussion about, both from out in the public eye as far and around council. Is there money in that fee right now to carry that for, until we have further conversations about what to do with solid waste fees in the summer?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay. So we could actually make a, a decision as part of this budget to reduce the solid waste fees back to what they are. And the reason I bring that up is because I, and what Randy, I guess, was alluding to, is Randy is probably alluding to the conversations that I've had, that the bud, that the council needs to get together this summer and come through the ideas that Councilman Green had, had, had proposed and that we now have state legislature agreement to work in that fashion of how to separate taxes from homes and lands. And we have a lot of work to do on, there's a lot of scenarios and a lot of questions in my mind, and I'm sure in the minds of, of everybody here, what that really means. And so what I would propose that we think about as a council is just holding the solid waste fee stable until such time that we come through those discussions. Because I, I would like to see us, in all honesty, it works, that my, my brush of the subject is it works for the citizens from a better perspective in that at least they can write fees off as taxes against the federal government and get actually some benefit to trash collection. I'm not sure how that will be seen by the citizens that like pay as you throw or whatever. So it's a, it's a hard discussion.
And I think there's a happy medium, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I think there is a medium where a portion of it could be wrapped into the tax base, but we still maintain a pay as you throw program because that's something I'm, I will fight for to the end until I lose. I really like the, I really like the pay as you throw system. I think a lot of people do and I think that's one of the benefits of our system, but I also see the point in wrapping some of it into a, into the general fund for the tax write-off. That makes sense.
But just wrapping part of it, you're not saving the 14 some thousand dollars that you could save if you wrapped it all into it and we don't do the two, bi-monthly mailings and.
Right.
Pay somebody to oversee the collection of all that.
And that's what I say, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Right.
And I really see that we, now that we have the tool, before we didn't have the tool. Now we've got it and we need to consider that. There's other things to consider when we consider that as far as land and how we tax lands in the future. There's a lot of open questions and I see kind of devote in the summer to questions with this new tool of playing lots of scenarios about, you know, do we go this way, do we go that way, as well as the public involvement in those decisions. But I think for this budget and what we're looking at right here, that it doesn't have to be addressed and we don't have to increase the fees at this point in time. That's at least what I'm hearing in, in the conversation.
That's a 40,000, $48,000 increase, 40,000?
It's actually a $72,000 increase.
This year, that's in the budget right now?
Fiscal year '12, fiscal year '12, it's a $72,000 increase.
So that, oh, sorry.
So where do you propose to get that money?
Or cut that money.
I believe the mayor's question, Mr. Green, related to, was there sufficient fund within that enterprise budget fund balance, not the general fund balance float that? And the answer is yes. I don't have any issue at all with the suggestion. I just, if I could, just note for you that the fund is not making expenses and we're pulling our balance down. We, and we will, and you can make that decision and it's not going to harm you in the first, in, in year one and certainly if you want to put it off for three months, it's a proportionally less hurt. The issue that we wrestle with, and this was the last decision we made actually before we put this budget to bed, was whether or not to recommend an increase this year. And, and this is what it came down to. We know that from, if you recall the CIP conversations, we have no cash going into our CIP and we have essentially no debt service capacity. So the only way we were going to, knowing those two things, the only other option to us, we thought, for replacing things like the debris trucks and other things that are quite dated and quite old, is to cash fund out of this fund. And there's about enough money in that fund, if we did the fee increase, to do that. Anything, if we don't do the fee increase, it'll simply pull that number down. We will eventually lose our ability to do that, which means that we'll need to fight for future cash or, or within our future debt service allocation. Having said that, your decision is to decide how best to manage these, these fund balances and you certainly know the mission we have and so whatever council thinks best, we will make work.
Or we could roll this increase into another penny tax increase and then that would give us some money to either reduce what we're taking out of the unappropriated fund balance or, as Frank suggested, we could fund the schools more. I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's time to really look at that.
Well, and I'm not saying that it isn't. Certainly, one of the other things that I want to consider at the end of June, at the end of the fiscal year, is employees and that goes on both, both sides, you know? That's the same way we did it last year, is we waited until the end of the fiscal year. We saw where we stood and then we made a decision on what we could or could not do for city employees. I would say that the $137,000 that the city has asked for, I mean, that the schools have asked for of the city to reimburse their employees, equivalent to what we laid out for city employees, we can certainly meet. I don't think there's any argument amongst anybody here that we can meet that. As far as what we do in addition to that in the next year, I'd say we do the exact same thing. We wait until the end of the fiscal year. We see what the unappropriated fund balance does and we make a judgment call whether we can do that raise, just like we did last year, as a, it's kind of almost like a bonus raise. It was, it was a lump sum and then rolled into their salary.
Right.
The same thing that I would anticipate that we would consider again. And Buddy, I, I think you might be exactly right, you know? You and, you and I have spent many years here looking at no capital improvements programs and all that, all the like. But again, we're right now in the, I guess, what I call the trough and the trough may get deeper one more time. And that is with the budget that we're looking at in 2013 with the increase in debt service. And we're going to need to save those pennies to, to fix that, in my opinion. That's a, at least a $600,000 bogey out there. It was, the intention, at least my intention, is to put out a budget that people can understand. And it's hard, it's hard, as y'all have had the conversations that I've had with individuals, it's hard to get them to understand that, and I'm sure Graham's had many calls about it, is they've got these moving parts. We've got a reassessment, which we have some questions about and we'll get to you in a minute. Don't, don't feel like you're getting left out. And then we have, and then, and then we have a rate change that offsets it. And it was, in my mind, the best way to make sure that people understand what we're doing is to make it a, a equalized tax. And those are great suggestions, you know, as far as the penny. And those are great suggestions, you know, as far as the penny would offset a couple of things. It would obviously make it easier for us. The cigarette tax that you're talking about, Frank, it's a great suggestion. But if we put all these moving parts in, then I think they, I think the citizens lose perspective on what it is that we're doing. And so I, I kind of wanted to go forward with just an equalized tax. That's, that's my opinion. That doesn't mean the council can't, can't go in a different direction. But it's just a, it's a one-for-one equalization, and yes, I do think we have a lot of work to do this summer as far as what to do about these two potential bogeys that we've got out there, the $600,000 debt service and the new tool that we've been given and what does that mean to us. And the one thing that, what I heard, it doesn't, the draw is not on the unappropriated fund balance, it's on the enterprise fund balance for the trash collection.
For the trash.
That's correct.
But the school money is coming from the unappropriated fund.
Unappropriated fund, agree with that.
And I think it didn't actually, the amount of money does not actually equal what we gave the city employees that found us stood it right. It's something less than the $1,000.
It is, it is something less. We gave, we gave $1,000 per city employee.
Right.
And, but remember that from our perspective, the teachers are shared, are shared costs. They're our employees, and I'm not, I'm not denying that. But the teachers have been reimbursed from the state at times when we haven't reimbursed from the city. So when we haven't reimbursed our city employees to do the same thing. So what I would say is, when you, when you look at that, it's kind of one of those things where it's, it's never seems fair. But we have to consider that as council, that, you know, there's two players in the, in the teachers' pay raises. The state is obviously saying no, and we're saying something. So.
But you look at the number of teachers in the system, or the number of staff in the school system, about 300?
Yeah.
And $134,000 divided among 300 people is $400 a piece?
It's more money than any school system in the report I gave to Jennifer the other day was, was paying.
Minus VRS, minus FICA, minus Social Security.
And the only one in the whole area giving a raise.
I could, if I could, just note too, the, the way that the school system came up with the number that they asked for was they chose the exact same number that we, that you invested in our pay pile. It's a hun, was $137,000. So when I got to, I learned about equity in college, and then I learned about horizontal and vertical equity in graduate school, which means there's more than one way to look at it. It is not the same amount per person, but it is exactly the same amount per system.
I understand.
May I ask a question about, Buddy had mentioned rolling in the one penny. Graham, I didn't prepare you for this, so I don't know if you have the answer, but if we, maybe the city manager might. I know that right now with the equalized tax rate, as it turns out, we have roughly, was it half the people are paying a little bit less and half the people are paying a little bit more? So it's, it's really right in the middle of how people are being affected. If we did bump it up to the one extra penny, do you know what, how much the percentages would change? We haven't done that?
Uh, okay.
Okay. And then my other question, since we were talking about trash, I was going to ask Randy, we spoke about this before, and I wanted to confirm that the, the bulky drop-off that we're, we've been having recently with the, and the leaf collection and all that, I know that not all citizens are using it, but, but with the citizens who are using it, they, they've, I've received a lot of positive feedback, people are liking it. Is it costing us more or saving us any money? Or is it pretty much a wash with the amount of time and, and wear on the trucks and drivers and all?
I don't think the, the, the mobile convenience site is costing us a great deal more money. It's costing us some. But, you know, in many ways, we would be moving the same product anyway. And to the extent that we can, we, we move folks around Saturdays, but, but oftentimes someone is out there in overhand, but it's not a large expense. And the, the leaf collection, even though you didn't ask about that one, we use our, we use our, a person from our, one of our crews on Monday, so we don't have any extra labor cost for that. We use vehicles that we already have. So, so both of those programs together, although they do cost something, are a tremendous bang for the buck. And as you all consider now or in the summer, how to structure this fund and what should be paid for what, one structural option to think about is removing the costs associated with those two programs, putting them in the general fund. And because I think one of the comments that some of you heard, people saying, well, why are we paying more for our, for our tote fee to support these other programs, which are not tote fee, right? You do have the option also, in addition to everything we talked about, moving those costs in the general fund.
And would that be a penny, roughly, two pennies, do you know?
Oh, that particular, those two particular programs together, neighborhood of maybe $30,000?
So half is a penny.
I could be off by a little bit, but that's about the cost of those two.
It's not even a penny. Okay.
The whole, I'm sorry, the whole program or just those two programs?
Just the two things that we have, the leaf collection and the mobile convenience site.
Just, just those two, but.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Right. But not counting all the.
I'm surprised that's the cost. I figured the savings on having to run around everybody's neighborhood and pick that stuff up would offset having the labor out here.
Really don't happen.
Said it's not much of a cost, but the people are out here when they're not normally out here.
See, I would think we're losing money because people are not paying $40 or $35 or whatever it is for, for branch pickup or for, but waste pickup so that, you know, they're getting it for free, basically.
Well, the, when they were paying $40.
We gotta be out some money.
But Frank, when they were paying the $40 or $30, whatever it was for the pickup, the cost of the pickup was 150 or something, yeah?
62, 162 was the number.
So that we were losing money with every single pickup. And now I think it's closer to being a wa, I think we are saving it. From what I was, not exactly.
That when you have the tip fees, they're probably about the same tip fees that we were doing, I don't know. We were doing before, but we're collecting some money. Maybe I'm wrong. I have no, I have no.
I don't, I don't think, I think the, the real answer is we don't have enough runtime on the program to really, really say, but I'd say we're essentially even. Because, and I, and I hear both of you.
Thank you.
I really do. But I'd say we're essentially even and that there's really no net benefit except for we've got less trash in the city. So, I, I mean, let's tell you, let it run for a year, I'm not sure what we'll know.
Yeah.
Let me ask something on the, on the real estate collections. When you projected the, the revenue based on the new assessments and the proposed tax rate, did you base it on 100% collection or do you always consider some level that's not going to be collected, at least on this year?
We did, I did do it based on less than 100%. I think it was about 98, which is what our average is.
I thought it runs about every year, wasn't it?
Running about that percentage, that's good.
So we, no, it is not at 100%.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I guess my other question I had, getting back to the assessor. And Buddy, look, 4,000, 4,000 parcels of property, I can't imagine what your, what your job is like, you know, trying to weave through that and make sure it's all right. But I guess there was a couple of larger parcels, have you seen, I'll make sure I share it with you, that didn't change at all. I don't want to get into the names on, on there, it's certainly public information, but there's, there's four or five large parcels that either didn't change or, or went up. I gave them one, but there's certainly not on there. And I was, what I'm trying to make sure is that we know that the assessment is, is right on, especially the property in the big woods. The second one there on the line?
You talking about Mr. White's property?
Yes.
First off, let me say, we haven't had any sales in a regular little while on larger parcels. Development has pretty much come to a halt in the last couple of years. Couple of issues. First was the, the pump station, and then, of course, that's now been corrected, and then just the economy going downhill. Builders are trying to do everything they can to sell just what stock that they have or doing too much building. So just to say that, am I completely 100% positive?
No, no, that's, that's not really the question. My real question is, it seems like in general, and I'll just make this overarching thing, in general, land values fell.
Well, there were actually, I ran the numbers today on vacant parcels, and let's see here. There were, let's see, 273 parcels that decreased in value, 377 that saw no change. Most of those, though, were wetland parcels, that's why there's so many of them. A lot of them were just marsh, so they didn't change a whole lot. And 81 actually saw some increase. Part of why I think some of them increased, my reasoning for some of them increasing and some of them not increasing were where the parcels were at. If, you know, right now, y'all've got a situation going on where some of the flood maps and stuff like that are changing, and that's going to have an effect on the bottom line for people, whether they have to have insurance on, on some parcels that they didn't have before in some areas of the city. Some of them were issues of just, they had been on the market for some time for various different reasons and they weren't moving. And, and when I tried to look at, why is it the parcel selling, you know, I thought that there was some reduction necessary for that parcel. And then there were others that were in areas that I, that I was seeing, not just with large parcels, but in, in housing altogether, the land values remaining pretty, pretty even or even actually increasing in some areas of the city, because I think, again, some of it goes back to the, the redoing the map of, and where people are now more interested in living here versus they might have lived here before. So I think some of the, to me, some of the demographics of why people are buying and paying what they're paying in some areas of the city shifted a little bit.
Yeah, these, these parcels concern me because, you know, there are two large, well, two of them on this page are two large parcel, two large tracts of property.
Right.
And I guess we always get to hear how we're taxing people out of, out of their property or whatever.
Right.
And I'm just trying to figure out, trying to figure out how much risk there was, because we're not talking about a small rate increase, we're talking about nine cent to offset what would be seen as a 12% reduction in property values, and these don't go down at all, yet they get the rate increase.
Well, now, two, two of these parcels here are kind of in the big woods. I, I don't know exactly where you say the big wood starts and where it stops, but two of these parcels were actually in part of a proposed development in the city at one time. And, and to the best of my knowledge, as the planning went on and so forth for those parcels, the issue of wetlands and how much of the parcels were actually developable, whether it was going to be cost-effective because of the wetlands and how it's laid out on the properties and so forth, and whether they were going to be able to get the amount of lots that they had originally anticipated, didn't work out. And, and so in, in, in view of information coming to me all the time about different properties and how things are affecting them and so forth, and, and how they go through planning and stuff, I try to consider all of those things. And that, that was the issue with two of these parcels that I actually met with the, well, one of the property owners, and I think he was representing the other property owner too, after the last assessment. And we went over some of the numbers and so forth. And, and I basically told him that in this next assessment, I was going to take a harder look at that and try to, you know, get more information on it and so forth. And that's pretty much what I, what I did, and that's why I assessed them the way that I did.
Okay.
Who does that?
Oh, that's, that's Oakmore.
Yeah, it's right down, just past the church on the, yeah, okay.
Both of those parcels were supposed to be in part of that development, extended back development.
Okay. But what I, I guess what I'm going to is, those I think are probably at risk for somebody coming back and pushing back on us, so there's some, some risk in counting on these dollars, in my opinion.
One of the things we do translating an assess, proposed assessment book to a budget book is we account for a certain amount of change.
Okay.
And so if you were to take the total assessed value that the assessor has, the times of by the collection, you wouldn't get our budget number.
Okay.
Because we, we already have a reserve, and we've gone back and we've looked at the kinds of reserves the city's had in the past in sort of shaping what we think this, customizing to this one.
Okay. Then that, then that fulfills my, I mean, that one answer makes me rest easier, because I just wanted to make sure we had an account for every dollar.
No, no, we have not.
When you expect all four profit pieces to come before the Board of Equalization, I would think.
Well, there's a process for, if you don't agree with, and, and we get that. The first process is they don't have to go to board, they can come discuss with you.
That's correct.
So, you know, and I.
But as part of the budget process, they come to me and they ask me, you know, what typically have you had over the years as far as how much did you reduce them, how much did the Board of Equalization reduce them? And all of that I know is, is considered into the numbers.
Is considered when I do the calculation.
Very good. All right. That answers my question. Sal.
I felt one additional thing, if, while folks are thinking.
Yes, go ahead.
I got this today, and we just want to share it with you so that you have the information that we have. And we have today, this is a good news issue, not a bad news issue. Teresa completed today or over the weekend, the, the up-to-date year-end projections for the current year, which she actually has in her hands, she's going to distribute to them for you. The, the positive news here, really, there are two elements to it, and, and it has bearing on some of the things you've talked about with regard to the general fund balance. We have seen our personal property collections improve in the current year by slightly less than $200,000. And while that sort, that was accounted for in our base going forward to 2012, that is unplanned money in the current year. So what that means to you is that the amount of money we thought we'd have at the end of this current year has gone up by about $200,000. On top of that, we have received a, an amount of money, a contribution towards our stadium complex, which is currently residing in the general fund. It may at some point be appropriate to move that to some other place, but you'll see that line sitting there. So it looks like our number has gone up by $250,000, one of which, the smallest piece, I think, is temporary as it moves from fund to fund, but the other is permanent real money this year. And that has to do with lots of things. First, that our values were probably higher than we thought, our collection efforts remain exceptional, and so we do have some, some good news. And as that translates into your decisions of the next couple of weeks and throughout your summer discussions, just wanted to footnote that for you as soon as we knew it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a specific one question, Gene.
Yes, go ahead.
And Seem Andrew and I talked about this on, today. Money given New York County.
Okay.
I know they're not in a hurry to get back and say, let's do a reappropriation based upon population and what we give to the courts and sheriff's office in 9/11. But, you know, it comes a time when, you know, our share or our population hasn't grown, theirs has, and we're probably giving more than we should. So, I mean, I don't know what the, the answer is. I guess you'd have to go to court.
Actually, I, I think that's a, it's a good point, because the census is now Actually, I, I think that's a, it's a good point because the census is now official, right? So with the new census numbers, maybe now is the time because you have the data.
And I know that Randy's talked to the county administrator and it's like, huh, huh, say what?
That's, that's why I brought the mayor with me to talk to the chairman. You're right, Mr. Green, it will record, the, the things, the cost share for the sheriff and the commonwealth attorney, clerk of the circuit court, those are established by a judicial, a judicial document and only a judge can change that. And I would imagine that him or her is going to want to know that both parties are in agreement with whatever change. And that's been, that's been our, our snag, but that might need to be on our, on our conversation list for the next time.
Absolutely.
I think we're due to host them for lunch this time.
Yes, we are.
I will, I will see to that.
I'm sure that'll be a fun conversation. Thanks, Frank. But it is, but it is, but it is, you're exactly right. And like I said, the data now is official to have the conversation.
And that's what I, I think before, they said, well, wait till the census comes out and is official before we, you know, before they would talk to us, you know, whatever. I think now perhaps should be the time that they should, they should talk, they should say something. We're getting soaked for a lot of money in New York County, in my opinion.
Okay.
All right. Maybe you could send them the message with the menu, huh?
I think we'll come up with, I think we'll at least, we won't have the conversation without the menu of where we're, where we're coming from. We can get that back together. Okay. Any other discussion that we want to have before we sit with the school board here? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So a lot of good work.
Oh, you don't, you're not going anywhere.
I don't know that we have enough seats.
Part one, thank you.
She's only retreating.
You still have the numbers.
Oh, my gosh.
No.
Never been adjusted.
Never.
It keeps going up.
Seven? Yep.
That's, that's-
When did they build the four house?